Right, let's call meeting order on Tuesday, March first, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic, a free and honest, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember James Blair. Councilmember Joseph Richardson. Councilmember Joshua Crossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Holly Smith, here. Councilmember Brandon Hess. Councilmember Lynn Ryan. Councilmember Perry Kaminsky, here.
All right, start off with discussion item A, this school year 2021 fourth quarter financial report. Stephanie, would you please report?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And so in your packet tonight, we have the 2021 year end financial report. That's a requirement in the RCWs that we do those on a quarterly basis. And so what it does, it really shows you how we ended the year in every fund that the city has. So, you know, starting on page one is the general fund, and I'm just gonna touch on some of the highlights. I know this is a lot of information, so if you have questions after tonight, please feel free to call me or email me because I know it is, it's a lot to look at. But I do want to say that in the general fund at ending in 2021, our operating revenues came in about 3% more than the prior year. Taxes were pretty healthy, sales tax, BNO taxes all came in fairly healthy. We actually, our revenues came in 110% over what we projected. So I feel like the revenues in the general fund were fairly strong. On the expenditure side, we came in at 93% of our expected expenditures. I think that's pretty good budgeting myself. You always want to try and target in there and budget what you're gonna spend. They were up about 5% from the prior year. You will see on page one, the general fund does end with a healthy ending fund balance. We do meet that 15% reserve that council has set out. However, please keep in mind, so that ending fund balance has rolled over to the 2022 beginning fund balance. We still have a couple union contracts that have not been settled. And so we do need to keep some reserves set aside for when we settle those contracts. If there's a financial impact, we need to have the reserves to. So in the general fund also, you know, we've received the ARPA funds, we're receiving it in two lots. We received the first in 2021, the second will be in 2022. And we've already decided in resolution 621 how we're gonna use those funds. And so we're accounting for that. As far as utility funds, stormwater, water, the sewer fund, they're all came in very healthy. I think Cody can agree with me on that. We're pleased with how the utility funds ended up. I know there's a lot of capital projects coming up in the utility funds, and I'm sure Cody will be talking about those. The special revenue funds, we have the street fund, the arterial streets fund, the tourism fund, the transportation fund. Those all have specific revenues and specific expenditures that are run through those funds. One of the things that we're doing this year, we had a fund set up for the school resource officer. And the state auditor said, well, you really can't have that as a separate special revenue fund. That needs to be combined into the general fund. And so what we'll do with that, we'll close that fund into the general fund, but we'll maintain those revenues and expenditures as separate line items within the general fund. So they won't get lost in the general fund, we'll still be able to report on those. And then the rest of the funds, we have our capital funds on page four. Keep in mind in the capital funds, when we get to year end, we're really trying to estimate how those capital projects are gonna end the year and how much maybe will go carried over to the next year. When you see our first budget amendment coming forward, we will be doing some carryover of capital project funds. Most of them have already been budgeted, they just didn't get finished by year end, or maybe they didn't get started. So we just carry those over, and we'll talk about more of that next week on the eighth. On page five are debt service funds, they're pretty self-explanatory. We've got some general obligation bonds, the Killian Road LID. And then we have some utility revenue bonds that we manage through those funds. And then the last page six are the reserve funds. And we've got four of those. So that's about all I was gonna talk about tonight. Do you have any questions for me tonight on any of this? I know it's a lot, so if you come up with anything, like I said, please email me or call.
Thank you, Stephanie. Our next presenter, Stephanie, 2023, 2024.
So the next thing in your packet is the proposed budget calendar for 2023, 2024. We wanted to get this out in front of you so that you know the dates as we move forward in the budget process, the dates that we plan to have budget discussions and public hearings and that sort of thing. So, and as you can see, we're sticking with the biennial budget. So the budget calendar will be for both years of that biennial budget. So, and it's pretty detailed, but if you have any questions or concerns, again, please email me or call me and we can address that.
Do you wanna, Stephanie, do you wanna talk about kind of the, some things we're moving up? Are we going a little bit quicker this year than we have in years past?
So.
Things that we're starting a little bit earlier on?
Right, so this year, what we're doing in June is, June is when I'll send out the official budget call letter. And that just basically goes out to all of the departments saying, okay, we're gonna start the budget process. So start thinking about what you're going to be requesting and, and you know, what the needs of your departments. We're also going to do something a little different this year where outside agencies who've requested funding from the city in the past, we're really gonna try and streamline that process and have a more like an application process. So nonprofits that may want to request some kind of assistance from the city, they'll have an application they can fill out. We'll receive all those applications, we'll review them, we'll share them with council and have some discussions about which ones you may want to move forward through the budget process. We're going to start all of that in June. We hope by the end of June to have the department directors provide their budget information to me. And then by the end of July is when we would want those outside agencies' applications back to us. We would also want to work with you council members, if you have any specific budget requests. If you could get that to us by the end of July, then that will help us build our preliminary budget. So we're hoping as we go into August, that then the mayor, myself, the city administrator, will be sitting down with all of the departments and really hammering out, what are we going to put into this preliminary budget? And what are we gonna bring forward to council? So we're trying to start earlier to give us a little bit more time. And then hopefully by, let's see, I think November 22nd is when we want to adopt the budget.
Just a little bit sooner than we have in the past, usually it's December. Another reason, though, for all this is to increase transparency. The organizations outside of the city, sometimes it's hard to know exactly for the public what's in the, who's applying for what, what those contracts are. This gives a very transparent way and also gives a, allows for input for the city council to decide on those as well. If the city council thinks these are worthy or worthy of taxpayer dollars that we're investing into, that's also important as well. Rather than just have the executive branch give you a budget and not have as much input from the city council. I truly think it's important to have the council input in, and so as we develop this budget. So it's another reason why we're doing it.
Questions?
All right, thank you, Stephanie. All right, lastly, we're gonna do a update on our, what we're, it's an AFSMI, you know, those are coming up here. We're starting negotiations, negotiations next week on those, both of them. You've administered chief, we're same issue. You wanna go and give us those updates, please?
Yeah, so as Stephanie said, we haven't started negotiation, what we did, we actually started at the end of last year. And we're gonna resume negotiations next week, March 7th. We'll spend the afternoon with AFSMI, and then on the 9th and 10th, we'll spend all day with the FOP. At least that's what's tentatively scheduled. If we reach a deal sooner, we'll be done sooner, but we have at least three days on the schedule to try to get the contracts done. That's it, so once we have more, we'll come back, let you guys know how that looks, so. Any questions?
So moving on to mayor's report, so the, yeah, it's past me, efficient, how we doing here in Seattle? We're doing a lot of reorganization, as you could see earlier this last month, we did, we did our, we did our hours that we did. We're opening up earlier, closing later. It's helping out with the public, they're starting to utilize it in both ends of the day, and it's proven to be worthwhile. Employees also seem to like the new work schedules as well. So it seems to be working. Going, moving on with that, we're also restructuring how we are organizationally, our structure here. Who, what departments report to what, or what, what parts report to which department heads? We're switching those things out a little bit around, a little bit, and we'll be giving more updates as they come out. But we do have a good, a new position there, not a new position, but a position we're kind of combining and updating to help out with it's our communication position, which we are now adding on to it, recreational coordinator as well. So what that position will do is also our communications, like our press releases, our, our social medias, reaching out to different groups. Blame them know what's going on with like the community center, doing rentals, that sort of thing. Right now, currently, there's a lot of different positions in our city, they're doing that. It's not as efficient, you know, it's due to the loss of our communications person in December of last, of last year. So we're kind of filling that position, everyone's been pulling together to get that done. They're doing a lot more than they should be doing right now, so this position will get us back to more efficiency. We've already saved up a decent amount of money, correct, for budget-wise, because we haven't had that position filled? So we're doing fine budget-wise on that. It's a position that's already been authorized, we're just modifying it a little bit. And it, the other part of that is recreational coordinator as well. So what that means is, we're gonna start, start organizing with certain youth sports, with any recreational sports that are out here in currently Seattle that's using our fields. We're gonna have them be our point person to work with them, make sure they have all their needs filled. If we have contracts with them, make sure our contracts are being filled with them and make sure that they're happy, basically. And then hopefully eventually that position will evolve to where we can actually have them provide some recreational support for youth and adults here. But it's just the start of that, and yeah, so I'm really excited for that. Other than that, let's go through your council initiatives. Remember, this is not when you give reports about what you did in your meetings, but what you like to see done, initiatives that you have that you're trying to start or updates that you have on them. So let's start with councilmember Blair. Thank you, councilmember Blair, councilmember Richardson.
Well, I'm not sure if it really counts, it's mostly Josh Crossman and Lynn's thing with the cleanup day. Trying to get some churches together, gonna meet with them on the 10th of March and see how we can move that cleanup and have some designated areas. But we want to communicate with you on that too. But that's about all that's going on right now, and as far as meeting anything, I'm good to go.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember Richardson, yeah, it's exciting to hear about that. I think we're gonna hear more from councilmember Crossman.
So May 21st, which is, if you know, you have a city provides dumpsters at the park to people put their stuff into. That they normally don't, and so we're combining that with Pretty City Day, there's councilmember Roy's name for it there, not mine. People that know me know that is not something I would've chose, but I was like, I can't think of a better name, let's go to yours, Lynn. So Pretty City Day, May 21st, and we just wanna get everybody in the community together to just clean up, you know, make it look good, pick up garbage, come together as a community, as you know, it's officially unofficial. You know, it's just, the city's not paying for it, you know, groups aren't paying for it, everyone's just doing it. You know, it's just people come together to do something good for the area. So we hope the public gets involved, we hope everybody just gets involved, all businesses and stuff like that. And then secondly, I want to encourage the public to, if you know somebody in the governor's office, to press on Inslee to help with our vandalism issue. It's bigger than what we can do at a city level, talking with the police chief and stuff and assistant chief. You know, really is above, it's at a state level of what to put, make whole people accountable. And so this one encourage everybody, everybody knows somebody, they say, hey, we need help. You know, these kids need to be held accountable for their actions, we just can't be letting people off scot-free. And so that's what encourages people to do that.
Whatever delegation, whatever state delegation, our representatives in our center, that is something that we are communicating with them, the impacts of crime. And it's something that we are discussing as a city as well, or the leadership team here. And some of the public workers, public safety committee have already been kind of briefed a little bit about it, but we'll be releasing some information about that here in the near future. We're gonna get a little bit tougher on current here in city of Yell, and there will be more about that here in upcoming weeks and months. But yeah, and then thank you on your, your initiative, I think it's a great idea, I like Pretty City Day, I think it's a good name. And La May is also a big partner on that as well, providing the dumpster. And we'll see if we can, I know, I think glass recycling was a big deal that some folks wanted. We're gonna work with La May though, see if, you know, get as much disposals, disposal services for people of Yell. Thank you, councilmember Crossman, councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to verify something that you said, this is gonna be in combined with what the city normally does, regardless, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
There are more info to come, but.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Just to go, one more thing, I think this is a really good initiative that councilmember Roy and Crossman are doing. This is a great example of what council, council initiatives are, I mean, it's perfect, so kudos to you two. All right, anything else, councilmember Smith? Councilmember Hess? Councilmember Roy?
Nothing.
Councilmember Kaminsky, I know.
Because I also have a Pretty City initiative.
Councilmember Kaminsky has about.
All about this issue, you're ready. So last week and a half or so, I met with the Arts Commission led by Steve Craig. And Kathy was there as our city representative, and the mayor was there, and they've appointed me to be the connection, the liaison to council, which is just fine with me. So within that initiative, I just want to back up a little bit and just say, if you've been very observant this past year, you might have noticed just tiny little things that we've done on the main street of Yell to help the businesses refresh their storefronts after the shutdowns. And with that, I convened with my friend and colleague, Corrie Thompson, and I asked her help and advice because she is a color expert and she's been an artist her whole life. So I can give you a full report on all the things we did, but I just wanted to lay that out in front. So through the year, we have worked on these projects, and then now we've come to a place where we're looking for bigger things to do. And of course, murals in the city is something that people have talked about for years. So with Corrie's help and over this whole year, and it's been hard working with owners, then not, then owners have tenants, and everybody has to make decisions along the way, it takes forever. But we have muscled through it, and we've got a really good team together. So Corrie has been our artist, and she'll be available to ask any questions too. She has painted, as you can see right there, actually, this is original artwork that we've created, that Corrie has created. And we, in order to put these on some of the buildings that are falling apart that would benefit with a mural, we eventually found photographer Jack Fong Everstein, and he is a 30-year veteran of Google. So he knows what he's doing, and he's been able to photograph Corrie's artwork and pixelate it in a way that it is, it can be transferred onto bigger pieces. Okay, and so after we found Jack, we found Scott Olson from Minuteman Press, and he used to be the Public Works Director in Aberdeen. Long story short, he has a couple of these presses, and he connected us to Jack Thorpe with Super Graphics in Seattle. And these other people, and I looked up their story, they're amazing. This guy is credited with inventing the bus wrap. I mean, these people really know what they're doing, and it even said in here, he got the Guinness World Record for the world's largest vinyl graphic at Paintfield in Ephrath. He's in the world records. So again, professionals that know exactly how to apply this artwork. The other cool thing is that Corrie's art is not painted on the wall, it is actually anchored to the walls of the buildings. So that if we own the artwork and we want to roll it off one day, we can do that and keep it and put it somewhere else. So I think this is a really cool benefit. So just for sake of prettiness, I'm going to pass these down, and I'll just show you what the business owners have been very excited about seeing on their buildings. If you could pass them all down, yeah. Oh, is this not one? No, yeah, you're right, okay. So when everybody has them, I will show you, Kathy, if you need one. So this first painting is a classic Maxfield Parish painting, except for the UFO. A hundred years ago, okay? So Corrie has duplicated this painting, but you'll see that the pillars actually match these pillars. This is from Gordon's wall, the green wall, that's actually crumbling and falling apart. There are, what do you call them, like?
Drain spouts.
The drain spouts are.
Three bricks over there, so I selected this theme just to not camouflage, but enhance that festival where I built it. I mean, building about a hundred years ago, it goes to enhance it.
So there was talk that these pillars might even be two-dimensional, but maybe not, depends on how we apply the, the artwork that they're going to do. And people may say, well, what's with the UFO? And the next page, I wanted you guys to know, because a lot of people don't know that Mount Rainier is where the very first UFO was ever seen and sighted, and that's how they coined the very word UFO. So it's kind of a subtle part of the art, but it's irrelevant. So I'll put that in there for you. So that's on the wall of Gordon's, and the next picture is just a picture, the first gentleman is Zach, and then that's Scott in the back, and Corrie's head. But you can see the degradation of the wall, the owners are not painting this wall, they're not fixing this wall. But this is where we could apply this artwork and have something really stunning to look at. And we want people to come and say, oh my God, let's take a picture with this UFO in the background or whatever, and have people drawn to the wall for that reason. This next photo is a, it's a moon that looks like a bowling ball, and guess where? This is gonna go on the side of the bowling alley. And Mickey, the owner, is super excited about this, as is Gary Rup on the other side of the road, where his people sit for coffee and just look at the concrete, so now they can look at a mural. So everybody's very jazzed about this, and we decided, should it not be a bowling alley? We can always get Corrie to color in the holes of the bowling ball and make it moving. Remove it as part of this. And then this next one is another one that she's done, and that's the original over there. And she is wanting to put the Yell Water Tower in this grouping of landmarks from other cities. Because people look at it, Corrie, and they get very excited. Is it already there? Cities around the world, they're landmarks, and people are very drawn to this. And we have permission from Bob's Tavern to put that on that wall. And then Gary Rup wants to work with us to create some kind of parket or something in that parking space that's just used for his truck right now. So these are people we've already talked to, and they're super excited about doing it. And then these next pages are Corrie's bio, she's been a teacher at SPSCC, she's been an artist her whole life. And we can ask her any questions that we want. So the Arts Commission has seen these, and they are super jazzed, fully on board. And then I did get the bid today. Minuteman Press has given us a bid. Now, these are two of the six projects that we have in mind, and the total budget for all of them, and they're doing this without tax. It's a special thing that they're doing for the city, $18,634 for like six projects of murals. And I did make copies of this, but I can do that.
Yes, so just to go off a little more, this was, don't forget Kaminsky said this was a recommendation by the Arts Commission. They move forward with these projects, these two projects, I'm not gonna steal their thunder too much.
No, go ahead.
But they will be presenting in our, I believe, next council meeting, next week. And we'll be recommending to the council to go ahead and move forward with this, hopefully the city council's decision, so it'll be up for a vote and all that. Not likely the next meeting, but we'll probably do the actual vote the following meeting, but we'll have discussion, the first one, we'll have the presentation and discussion.
And just to remind you guys, because you were new, but this is in the budget. Stephanie, from last year, we do have $50,000 in the budget that I requested for the vacation of the city. So that is there, and then also next week, Steve Craig would like to bring in, we all know George Sharp from Steady. And he worked in the city of Tenino to create a Creed, it's called the Creative District. It's something.
Arts District.
Creative Arts District, okay. And so he's got us on board, and he would like to come next meeting and also talk about it and other things that we can do, where we can get grants and funding and things for, to create a district in the city for art, of all types, of all types. So does anybody have any questions for Corrie while she's here? Maybe for coming, Corrie?
Councilmember Richardson, is that a solar eclipse on the dreaming?
It is.
Okay, and then, and what is the figure standing to the right there on the side of the water?
This one?
Yeah.
This is just a figure that is drawing evolved from one level of existence to another. This is to give people a hope of a future that's maybe a golden age, something more than what we're going through today.
That's what I'm trying to perceive, but I gotta be honest, getting like the heebie-jeebies, can have some of it, but a bowling ball idea seems the most relevant to me. Just, just trying to capture some.
Councilmember Smith.
I understand it's gonna be presented next week to the council. Are we voting on, or do you know, will we be voting on not just the cost? I understand it's already, are we also voting on the artwork, or is that kind of set in stone, I guess is my question.
Well, we have the approval by all parties, including the Arts Commission, which is, I was asked to get there, okay? So if anybody doesn't have any objections, we're hoping to just go ahead and move forward with one of the, one or two of the projects.
Yeah, ultimately, it is the council decision, there is a recommendation, yeah, however you want. Yep, okay. This is, yeah. It has been budgeted, and it is gonna be recommended by the Arts Commission, but ultimately, it is the council's decision, having a rapport with it. That said, you know, it's weighed upon heavily by the Arts Commission, by councilmember Kaminsky as a recommendation. And that's what we'll be asking for moving forward, but we'll have it absolutely lined out for you, and if need be, we can do it line item by line. But that'll be more of that discussion at the presentation on how we move forward with it. Councilmember Hess? Any other questions?
Oh, and I was just gonna say, this, this one, I'm sorry.
So has there been any discussion with these business owners about any contribution on there?
Uh, yes.
I, I, I don't mean it disrespectfully, but I think you do some awesome, amazing work. My job is to find that balance between that and the city's perspective as far as where I'm at. By doing this, you have, the business is gonna see. you help, the business is gonna see benefit from. So I fail to see why they should not help in the process of providing their building.
If we're gonna own the artwork, then we would want to control it by saying that it's our artwork, we can look at it that way as well.
I can understand that. Like.
And just for perspective, I asked Steve Craig, he's the gentleman that has the painting already on the Triad Theater. That painted artwork, he said he spent about six thousand dollars. So when we break these down, these are about three each for the six projects that we have to get to the.
They're, they're painted vinyl.
Uh, yeah. And and they're anchored to the buildings in a way that can be removed. So we can do what we want. Councilmember Hess.
I understand Councilmember Blair's uh concern and I'm thinking that what we could do is what you have for cost is the murals themselves. Not if the, if the side of the building needs to be uh fixed, secured or in some way to make it so it's safe to put it up there, that's not included in that cost, is that correct?
No, I believe it is, it is included.
Then what, when, when this comes up, maybe what we could look at is how it can be shared. And what I mean is like if somebody's building wall is not strong enough, it's not structurally secure or it's uh deteriorating, needs to be cleaned, whatever it may be. But maybe the business owner needs to assist with, whoever owns that needs to help pay for that. We can pay for going on because we own it. So that, that would just be something that I might suggest on how we get a compromise on the cost. When we're looking at costs.
This says installation of cable frame systems and barretts or, oh, sorry, banners and a set of diamond prints includes labor and a boom truck to professionally install them. And so.
It sounds like what they're providing is basically a frame that gets attached to the wall. We just need to make sure that whatever gets attached to the wall is gonna be safe and secure.
Right. But, but they can, but.
I'm already having that conversation with one of the business owners where he has a situation where it is an eyesore, there is a chain, an air conditioner, a meter, a window, cords. I, it is so distracting from that mural with the bowling ball. We're already having a conversation and he seemed quite willing to create whatever additional structure needed to happen to accommodate a mural just to cover that. So when you're driving by, you don't look at all of that and say, well, that's a nice mural down the alleyway. So we've already been in these conversations with people. And a few years ago, I tried to go around and just ask the store owners to pick up the tap to uh to murals or even just paint the storefronts. And there was no interest whatsoever because they were already struggling financially. So Terry has been kind enough to help everybody to say, okay, we're gonna help you with this and then we own the murals. And if you need to repaint or restructure your wall before we put it on, then that is their responsibility.
Councilmember Blair.
Uh did they give you a lifespan on these?
Seven hundred and fifty. Twenty-some odd years, I mean, they're, they're in it for the long.
I, I would like to answer, because I just found out today, I'm so excited. This company is the best of the best. It's a subsidiary of Tesla and Boeing and we follow their principles and it doesn't get any better than this. And uh they, because most of these are even facing sun on.
Councilmember Smith.
So I'm, I just be honest, I'm struggling a little bit with how that ties into Yelm. I see Rainier and I see the ventricular clouds.
What, with the mountain in there?
No, and I get that. I guess the other, I guess. And again, you're, you're very talented, it's not that, I just look at that and I don't see small-town Yelm. I, I, I don't know, I'm struggling. So where would this one be?
This one is on the side of Bob's Tavern, we're hoping to create that empty space with an old rusty truck.
Got it, okay.
Which we consider a bistro with a fountain in here. Not all of them are descriptions of Yelm, you could look around and see Yelm.
And I understand.
The way it relates and answered to your question is it put the water tower in with the Chrysler Building, Statue of Liberty, uh state bank that we're important to. And when this is ten by twenty feet and I write Yelm across here, it's gonna be quite insane. What's the mountain?
No, I, exactly, I, I get the mountain. Yeah, I get the bowling ball, I get it, but, yeah, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Richardson.
Okay. Um so as far as I understand, creative control is not any of the businesses' choices. Um you present to them the mural, they don't really have a choice on what goes on in the building?
Oh, no, no, I, even the color of their building. We discussed it in length, what would you like to see? Like for the one uh with the two pillars, they wanted to see gardens. You know, they wanted something that was, you know, maybe a fountain or outdoors and 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 so that's what I produced and they had several options. They looked at other subject matter and both the owner of the trust and the owner of the building really liked this one, so we decided to move ahead of that.
Yeah, no, because I just want to make sure, like, when it comes down to it, that, you know, they do have a say as a business and the, the building that they have of what is put on the building. And I know that the funds are coming from, you know, a separate place and they couldn't afford to do it in the past. But just really want to keep intact that these business owners have a say or at least some creative control.
I went to the point of hearing their favorite colors of, like, the old doors on the Faw Building. We replaced everything with brass and made it, it, the doors were falling.
It looks fantastic, the Faw Building.
Yes, I do, and every flower pot matches the decor and, you know, the owner of Faw has certain colors that are good luck from her country and she liked what we were doing.
Yeah.
And I just want to take a moment to mention this one other book that uh is on loan from Steve Craig. He said, this man, and I haven't read, I just got it in my hands. Uh it's out of print, but this man went and just painted the town himself and it probably took years. I can hardly wait to read it. But their businesses thrived, every one of them benefited from this. And I personally will go out of my way to shop at Queen Anne District or Shehellers or someplace where there's murals and gardens and, you know, flowers rather than some gray and beige town that has nothing going.
Well, I, and I just want to make sure too, because um as you drive through Yelm, I want it to really have that feeling of Yelm. And I don't want people to get an eerie feeling when they're driving through Yelm because it is coming off a little bit, you know, not so much Yelm, it's, it's, it's very deep artistically. It's almost like something I would see uh on some Pink Floyd paintings. Um and I'm, and I'm not trying to categorize, I'm just trying to be honest.
It's a nice there, everybody likes Pink Floyd.
Yeah, yeah. But as far as like, I would, when I think of Yelm, I think of, you know, more northwest, uh more Native American. And even when we went to the tribal council, they had mentioned that, you know, Mount Rainier in Yelm was the pathway to Mount Rainier. And so I see aspects of that, which I'm good. I just, I just really get distraught with like UFOs and, and the solar eclipse.
Well, I want to say one thing about that that may put your mind to rest. I have a studio in Lacey. Oh, great, they just said, please paint here because I had done painting of the mountain and put it on the doctor's part. And people take a handful of them, like the image. And they allowed me to put my paintings in that office and it's full of them. He said, you turn this place into your own art gallery and the benefit of that is I'm in the back listening, they don't know I'm there and all day, every day, literally, I hear people saying, wow, this art is amazing, where did you get it? So I already know that the feedback, uh the reaction to all of these paintings that are being displayed and have been for about six months is as good as it gets. And I've owned several art galleries myself and I've never seen that kind of a reaction before. It is so exciting and they all know that they will be murals somewhere someday and they're excited about it.
I appreciate your time being here, thank you.
Councilmember Crossman, you just saw.
Yeah, um two questions. Number one back, I was uh referencing James. I, I think I missed it. How long do they guarantee the vinyl will last in the weather?
It depends on.
Average, it's average, because I mean, I'm.
Depends on whether that sun's hitting it directly, how much sun we have there here. But last I heard, it was probably ten years. And and they don't even know yet, it could be, you know, even longer than that. And some of them, they fade so gradually, like one is mostly just a beautiful cloud scape. And you won't even notice when it fades. And this one in particular, because this one is at eye level. If I need to, I'll be in there painting it by hand, the, the actual print and restoring it or refining it if it doesn't look good enough.
Because the vinyl deteriorates and as well as fades over time. Um and so will it just print out a new one or would it just do a different?
Instead of somebody graffiti's it, they print it and put it on top. And we already have the infrastructure, you know, they just put it on top and it looks like new.
We'll just graffiti in ten years.
Yeah, 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 well.
Do you have a second question?
Yeah, second question is, I'm kind of all of the same was, yeah, if I'm voting for city funds, I want to see something related to Yelm. Um this doesn't say Yelm to me. Uh if Gordon's wants to pay to put this outside a building, cool, go for it. Uh but using city funds, I want to see something more that speaks to Yelm. Um that's my personal opinion. You know, there's nothing wrong with the artwork itself, again, like everyone said, lots of color, looks great. It just doesn't say Yelm to me. I would like to see if we're spending taxpayer money on city Yelm stuff. I want to see stuff that speaks to Yelm. Uh more so than, these don't speak to Yelm to me personally, so.
Councilmember Blair.
That's my objection.
A couple things, I'm not a fan of vinyl, I was not. If we were gonna do anything, we'd have someone actually paint the mural. But on the flip side, then, yes. I feel the way I feel, but I just, I, I don't feel that it's the city's responsibility to pay for paintings. Steve Craig showed exactly how it can be done. There's no need for, in my opinion, for the city to be paying for paintings. Didn't Steve Craig get that done or ordered the city?
No, state funds, but yeah, he uh, he reached out for capital funding or funding in the capital budget, state capital budget.
I didn't, I, I thought he paid for it, so, so I'll back that one up.
Before you say, I just want to remind council that we will have a more robust, hopefully, just similar to this conversation at our next meeting uh when the commission, and obviously, it's.
Just a heads up.
Yeah. Sorry, please continue, Councilmember Blair.
May I respond to your concern there because we've painted a few buildings already? And the next day, especially one in particular, the owner came out and started peeling the paint off. These are hundred and it had been pressure washed. These are a hundred-year-old buildings, some of them. And if I got up there on a scaffolding in the rain and thinking something, number one, it would never be, if you look at the difference between Steve's mural and this one, this one is far more detailed. I like the idea of the gateway to Mount Rainier. But at the same time, if all of them are the past, you don't get to move forward looking over your shoulders. Some of them have to show something about hope for the future and right now.
And I totally understand that and I just, I want you to understand, anything that I'm saying, it's nothing towards you personally. I think you make some amazing art. I'm just telling you, it's nothing towards your art, nothing, anything like that.
I understand, but the vinyl concern, we look at the place that was just painted, I think, this year uh perpendicular to the storefront at Tim's Pharmacy and it's peeling already. The day after we painted TK Nails, she went out and just started pulling big pieces off because these are old buildings. So the way to protect the artwork and the investment is to stretch it on stretcher bars just like, and it's still, you still have the image, it's just more preservable.
All right, and then moving on to Councilmember Roy, before, I do want to correct myself. It wasn't the, I was thinking of the water tower that you were referring to, you were referring to the, the painting on.
Yes.
Sorry, I believe that was privately funded. Um, Councilmember Roy.
I will say one thing that is a benefit to the vinyl versus right on the building. If you remember decades ago, um and I don't remember because I was not alive. Um. But um there was a, an artist here in Yelm, Neil Brown, and she painted murals on the sides of um of a bunch of buildings. There was one on the, on the side of Tim's and I think there was one on the side of, um I don't know why I'm looking at you, you weren't alive either. The Habitat for Humanity Store. Um and then in the course of time, um they were painted over or um, you know, they were lost. And, and so now the only um large mural that is left of hers in Yelm is in the old bank building. And so like, there's been a, it's been painstaking efforts have been made to, to preserve that. Yeah. Um but we can't, you know, guarantee that over the course of, you know, a hundred years, whatever. So I do like see the, the benefit of not putting it just straight up on the, on the building, but having something um barrier in place.
We're gonna give one final comment to Councilmember Kaminsky and then we'll.
For sure, and I didn't know that and I'm old enough. I just wasn't here.
See?
So I didn't know that, that there was ever murals over there. But Andy, I just took, for your concerns over there at the end of the table, I totally get it. And art is a very personal thing. It's the choices that we make are very personal to our likes. Uh but we want to let you know for sure that we have vetted and talked to these owners and tenants and everybody involved and they are very excited about these images. So given that, I, you know, you can't, n- not everybody is gonna be happy. And yes, do we want young themes? Yes, we're gonna incorporate it in all sorts of other ways, but this is just a start to making it more beautiful.
All righty, thank you for your um council initiative, Councilmember Kaminsky. All right, and that's all for, as well, folks, do we hear a, look for adjourned?
Study session?
Yeah.
My motion to adjourn.